I do have some announcements this morning. There's some tables set up over here against the wall. There's one for the Fairfield Community Center. They're selling some quilt raffles, a dollar each or six for five bucks. Tickets for the Sacraman Boogie, which is going to be on April 12th up at the Abbey. And they also have a list of the 2019 concert series for you to take home. The second table is for the Beth Northrop Memorial Library. And there's some books there that are also free for the taking. And then the third one is for the Planning and Zoning Committee. There is childcare available by donation for the eighth grade. There's a bake sale out in the hall that is by donation and it's for the eighth grade field trip. And brunch is offered today by the PTO, again by donation. So please help yourselves. Thank you. I'm gonna now review some of the more commonly used Robert's Rules. As everyone knows, Robert's Rules of Order are the basic rules for conducting these meetings, except for where Vermont law may take precedence. All motions, remarks, and discussions should be directed to the town moderator. I will do my best to recognize you, the order that you have raised your hands. You must always be recognized before you speak. After being recognized, please stand up, state your name. Wait for the microphone to get to you. Who's got the microphone? Give a wave. Oh, she's over here. Okay. And that way you can be heard by everyone. And remember, remarks are limited to five minutes. An article needs to be moved and seconded by the body and then restated by the moderator before it is under consideration and debate may begin. The person who makes the motion has the privilege to speak first. Articles can have only one amendment at a time associated with them. And amendments to an article likewise may have only one amendment at a time associated with them. So we'll kind of peel them back as needed. After you have spoken on a particular article, you will not be recognized a second time during discussion on that article or amendment until all other voters who wish to speak for the first time are given an opportunity to do so. And you're only allowed to speak twice on any given article. So consider your questions when you speak. My role as moderator is to help you accomplish the business that we intend to do today. Please raise your hand and ask questions if you don't understand what's happening or if you think what's happening is wrong for some reason. Or if you want to do something but not quite sure how to do it, we'll figure it out. At this time, I would ask anyone here who is not a registered voter in the town of Fairfield to raise your hands. Thank you. And as you, I'm sure you're all aware, unless there's a suspension of the rules, you may not vote or speak on any particular article. I would now like to call the town meeting to order and ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I would offer a moment of silence for fellow townspeople who are no longer with Thank you. I'll now proceed with the reading of the warning for today's meeting. The inhabitants of the town of Fairfield, Vermont, who are legal qualified voters in the town of Fairfield are hereby warned and notified to meet at Veterans Hall in the Village of Fairfield Center on Tuesday, the 5th of March, 2019, at 10 o'clock in the morning to transact the following business. Article 1, to elect a moderator for a one-year term. Article 2, to receive the various reports of the officers of the town as contained in the current town report. Number 3, to elect for the legal voters of said town the following officers. A, one select person for a term of three years by ballot. B, one select person for a term of two years by ballot. C, one auditor for a term of three years by ballot. D, one lister for a term of three years by ballot. E, one library trustee for a term of three years. F, one library trustee for a term of two years. G, one library trustee for the remaining balance of a two-year term, one year. H, a first constable for a term of one year. I, a grand juror for a term of one year. J, a town agent for a term of one year. Article 4, shall property taxes be due and payable on the first Friday in the month of November? Article 5, shall the voters approve the 2019 total general fund expenditures of $1,427,107, of which $948,967 shall be raised by taxes and $478,140 by non-tax revenues? Previous year total expenditures were $1,499,342, of which $1,020,19 were raised by taxes and $479,323 by non-tax revenues. Article 6, shall the voters approve 2019 expenditures of $144,561 for the Beth Northrop Memorial Library, $108,271 of which shall be raised by taxes, and $36,290 by non-tax revenues? Previous year total expenditures were $141,462 for the Beth Northrop Memorial Library, $95,687 of which were raised by taxes, and $45,775 by non-tax revenues. Article 7, shall the voters approve $92,225 for the support of the Fairfield Volunteer Fire Department? Said appropriation only to be paid by the town upon condition that the Fairfield Volunteer Fire Department submit to the town by November 1st, 2019, a copy of its most recent balance sheet and bank statement for review by the town auditors. Previous year, $92,225. Article 8, shall the voters approve $15,000 in support of the Fairfield Community Center Association? Previous year, $15,000. Article 9, shall the voters approve a donation of $3,971 for the Franklin County Home Health Agency? Previous year, $3,971. Article 10, shall the voters approve a donation of $3,000 for the outdoor classroom? Previous year was $2,500. Article 11, shall the voters approve a donation of $1,000 for the Franklin County Animal Rescue? Previous year, $1,000. Article 12, to transact any other non-binding business that may properly come before this meeting. Article 13, to adjourn. I would now entertain a motion to elect a moderator for a one-year term. Okay, motion is made to nominate Bridget Rivet. Is there a second? Several hands, second by John Bernard. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing no objections, I would move the clerk cast one ballot for Bridget Rivet as moderator for a term of one year. Thank you, everyone. It is a pleasure. Okay, Article 2, to receive the various reports of the officers of the town as contained in the current town report. Chair recognizes Laura Fullweller.
I'm Laura Fullweller, and the chair is the trustee of the library.
Yeah, wait for the microphone. Thanks.
I'd like to draw your attention to the handout that you received that you came in here, which lists all the wonderful things our library is doing with the money that you've been putting on. We also hand out ribbons for inspiration about how libraries serve us and serve our communities. The table over there has free books, and it also has, I believe, hearts from all patrons who noted why the library is so important to them. So please make it a point of stopping by and checking that out. I want to thank Jen Arshinbo, whose term expires this year, for her service. I want to thank Laura Bellstrom, who just returned to a broken water pipe and is trying to deal with that crisis in her own area. She's not here with us.
She just walked in.
Oh, God bless you, Laura. That is service.
Laura, how's your day?
Oh, my God. That is service and commitment. I want to thank Christina Bolduc, who won't be here because she's having a baby today.
She had it.
She had it!
She said I could say something.
Oh, see, I'm really...
There have to be nine pound suits on to be my wife.
Oh, God. Nine pound success.
I want to congratulate Christina Bolduc, who serves as a trustee, and Peter Burns, who is here, all of whom are hardworking volunteers for your library. I want to thank Sarah Montgomery and Wendy McCarron, who are the faces and people and helpers you need when you come to the library. But I'd like to also thank the friends chaired by Bridget, who with their generous donation to the library are able to do things for the library that we can't do and we can't afford with our budget. This year, the Friends are sponsoring Madeline Kuhn to come to our library Saturday, March 30th, at the end of this month, to discuss the book she's just written. It's called Coming of Age. I've read it. It's good. So can you please sign up for that at the library so we know how many seats to prepare for you? We promised a good, robust audience. So we're very excited and are very grateful to the Friends for that. So if you participated in the "Bit or Not," and were generous enough to join us for that, that's where that money goes. It's like a special gift to the library that we can't afford to put in our regular budget. So thank you, Friends. Finally, I just want to remind you that our library and libraries all over keep a very noble and old tradition. Cicero, who was born in 106 B.C., said, "If you have a garden and a library, you have everything you need." So thank you so much for your support.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sally Colapi, the director of the Fairfield Community Center. And I want to invite you to stop by our booth here and see all the great things that the community center does for Fairfield and the surrounding towns. We have a beautiful quilt raffle going on right now that will take place sometime during December. We've got our flyers for the April 12th Sacraman Boogie at the Abbey that we hope you'll join us for. There's a list of the Meeting House concerts, the 10 concerts taking place this summer, which have had a really good turnout in advance, so thank you for your support on that. There's food shelf information. There's senior meal menus for March. Hopefully, some of you will join us. You don't have to be a senior to enjoy that meal. We may still have a few seats left for the kids in the kitchen classes coming up, so if you're interested in that, let me know. There is April Vacation Camp and Black Creek Adventure Camp forums to sign up for. If you want to make sure that you're on the mailing list for those, those are currently being pulled together. There's also the annual copies of the annual letter if you wanted an extra copy or missed that in your mail. And there's information about the Little Acorns Daycare Center that takes place, is held in the community center. They have a few openings if you're looking for our daycare or know anyone who is. And I want to thank some of the wonderful volunteers that I see around here at the community center for their support. They work so hard. Amazing group of volunteers. And also say hi to our, introduce yourself to our new board member, Katie Schwartz is here. Recently joined the board, and she is a great addition to have. So thank you so much.
Any other discussion on any of the various reports of the officers of the town?
Hello, everyone. My name is Alicia LaRocque, and I'm the zoning administrator. I just wanted to take a minute while I have on your attention to go over some handouts that you may have received at the door or you collected at the table over here. We're currently about two-thirds of the way through a major project revising our current zoning districts and therefore bylaws. And we're looking for public feedback. The next big forum will be April 15th at 7:00 p.m. at the town clerk's office. And if you wanted to take a look, I have a map. This is our current district's map. This is our future district's map. I also have a copy of a draft that you can thumb through. And on your paper, on the fourth slide, additional information, you can follow those links to see what kind of changes have taken place during this process. All of our meetings are open to the public, and the planning of zoning forms usually be the first Monday of the month, 8:00 p.m., sometimes 7:00. So check the calendar on the Fairfield website. That's about all I have to give you for now, but come check out the changes.
Any other discussion on various reports? Okay, we'll move on to the next article. The floor is now open for nominations for one select person for a term of three years by ballot.
I would like to nominate Tom Horgan.
Tom Horgan has been nominated, seconded by Melissa Manson. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? If there's no objection, I would ask the clerk to move, to cast one ballot for Tom Horgan as select person for a term of three years. Thank you. Congratulations, Tom. Now the floor is open for nominations for one select person for a term of two years by ballot.
I'll nominate Charlie Thomas.
Charlie Thomas has been nominated, seconded by Damian Boomhauer. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing no objections, I would ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Charlie Thomas as select person for a term of two years. Congratulations, Charlie. Now the floor is open for nominations for one auditor for a term of three years by Chair recognizes Mary Schreindorfer.
I nominate Judy Magnin.
Judy Magnin has been nominated. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Charlie Thomas. Are there any other nominations for auditor? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none and hearing no objections, I would ask the clerk to cast one vote for Judy Magnin as auditor for a term of three years. Thank you, Judy. Now the floor is opening, open for nominations for one lister for a term of three years by ballot.
I nominate Alicia LaRocque.
Alicia LaRocque has been nominated.
I'll second second.
And seconded Damian, you get the tie. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Okay, hearing no objections, I would ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Alicia LaRocque for a lister of a term of three years. Thank you, Alicia. Floor is open for nominations for one library trustee for a term of three years. Your name, please?
Kyle Ashton.
Kyle Ashton?
Kylie.
Kylie, thank you.
I nominate Samantha Thomas.
Samantha Thomas has been nominated. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Charlie Thomas, second. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none and no objections, I'd ask the clerk to cast one vote for Samantha Thomas for a term of library trustee for three years. Now the floor is open for nominations for a library trustee for a term of two years. Laura?
I nominate Peter Burns.
Peter Burns has been nominated. Is there a second? Second Laura Bellstrom, okay. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, move, the clerk cast one ballot for Peter Burns as library trustee for a term of two years. Congratulations, Peter. Floor is now open for nominations for our first constable for a term of one year. Oops, sorry. Thank you. All right, open for nominations for one library trustee for the remaining balance of a two-year term, so it's another year. Joanna?
I'd like to nominate Deborah Hastings.
Is there a second? Are there any other nominations? Laura?
I'd like to nominate Christina Bolduc.
And is there a second? Nominated Christina Bolduc, who has served one year of the two-year term. Is there a second? Laura Bellstrom, second. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Who seconded what? The gentleman halfway back right here with the beard.
I don't know who that is.
The person that seconded Deb, state your name, please.
Lauren Baath.
Lauren Baath, thank you. I had a little momentary laugh there. Chair recognizes Deb Hastings.
I would like to withdraw my nomination.
Okay, Deb wants to withdraw her nomination. But are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Okay, so we're down to one nominee, Christina Bolduc, for the remaining balance of the two-year term. If there are no objections, I would ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Christina. Thank you. Congratulations to Christina. Now we'll have some nominations for first constable for a term of one year. Linda Hodette has been nominated. Is there a second? And seconded, thank you, Charlie. Any other nominations for first constable? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, I would ask the clerk to cast a ballot for Linda Hodette as first constable for one year. Thank you, Linda. Now the floor is open for nominations for a grand juror for a term of one year. Charlie Thomas has been nominated. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Norm. Are there any other nominations for grand juror? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none, I would ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Charlie Thomas as grand juror for a term of one year. Congratulations, Charlie. And last is open for nominations for a town agent for a term of one year.
Vanessa Cattell has been nominated.
Is there a second? And seconded by Joanna Jeros. Are there any other nominations for town agent? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay, I'd ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Vanessa Cattell as town agent for a term of one year. Congratulations, Vanessa. All right, Article 4, shall property taxes be due and payable on the first Friday in the month of November? I'd entertain a motion. And a second, seconded by John Gordon. Okay, we're open for a discussion on shall the property taxes be due and payable on the first Friday in the month of November? You ready for the question? Thank you. All right, all in favor of having property taxes be due and payable on the first Friday in the month of November, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Motion passed. Article 5, shall the voters approve the 2019 total general fund expenditures of $1,427,107, of which $948,967 shall be raised by taxes and $478,140 by non-tax revenues? Previous year total expenditures were $1,499,342, of which $1,020,19 were raised by taxes and $479,323 by non-tax revenues. I would entertain a motion for the total general fund expenditures. We have to have a motion and a second before we're open for discussion. Motion by Dan McCoy, is there a second? Seconded by Damian Boomhauer. Floor is open for discussion. Jane?
My question is...
Wait for the microphone, please, so we can all hear you.
My question is, what are, what are the things that are covered in the general fund or is that on a page in the book somewhere?
Under this, the way it's done this year, the library is separate. The main part is for basically running the town. Your fire department is another one that is separate. The rest of it includes all the business of the town, like your, these Fairfield Community Centers is separate, and there's a total number that gets added to that number there. It's where you come up with the total number. As far as for the town part, I guess if you turn to page 82, it'll explain a lot of what we spent the money on last year. And the biggest thing was that new sand salt shed. When we started looking at that years ago, I think we were looking at a couple hundred thousand dollars. And then we get this grant for 300,000, which we had to make up 20% of it. Well, when we started getting these numbers in for bids, I think somebody had been on a crack plate or something. The first one, the highest one we got, if I remember correctly, was $1.1 million. And the lowest one was... And the lowest one was 724,000. So eventually, when we went through these numbers ourselves, and since we had built the town garage and the fire stations out of our own funds, we just told them to take the grant back. We didn't want it, we couldn't afford their grant. So they allowed us to use a portion of the money for the engineering, and we did not have to pay that back. So the rest of this is done, a lot, a lot of praise has to go to your town crew. They really worked hard. They get the whole building down, get the site prepped. Good Hughes Construction did the leveling. It was just amazing the work those guys get done for the money. So we still built it, all total, $395,000, which was still cheaper than if we'd have taken any of this grant money. And we got far more things done. On the backside of that shed, there's six bays where we can keep equipment, store other materials. It was not part of that original one. Gilbert Hill got brought down, the angle got changed. There's just so much that got done. We wound up with a lot better building and more useful to the town than we would have under this other power. So that was, that took up a lot of the summer. And we had a couple of big items. One was down St. Rocks, where basically the roads started falling in. And in the end, we were able to not have to tear that whole thing up because the state wanted us to put in a bridge if we did anything down there, which would turn into a half-a-million-dollar deal minimum. And we're very lucky, Jim Smith had worked for the state for years, came up with a design that they'd used elsewhere. Basically, they welded rebar through the whole bottom of the culvert that was there, dug it out and poured concrete, Harrison Concrete came in and did that. And I think that job was done for roughly thirty thousand dollars, somewhere in that range. And it should last thirty to forty more years. There's many of those culverts on the North Road that were put in in the early sixties. That something will have to be done, and we're hoping maybe this same solution could be used on them rather than tearing these culverts up that would, oh, easily be half-a-million-dollar deals. Because now they want you to put in something, if you've got a ten-foot culvert, maybe a twenty-five or thirty-foot bridge for a hundred, a year of bends. And next year, the one major project that's ahead for the town is down on the South Road by Fred and Betty Ryan's. There's a major culvert down there that we've got under a grant program, and that'll be probably one of the biggest items for next year. And we're hoping when we get, we've completed so many of these bridges and culverts, we're hoping to get back to putting a higher level of gravel on the roads. Basically, get back to trying to do one road at a time, and put like six inches of gravel on it, and get them back up where they need to be properly graded and ditching. We've done a lot of ditching and culvert in the last few years to try to get prepped up to start this process. It's not a short-term thing, so. I guess that's pretty much what we've accomplished last year. Hope we don't make too many mistakes this year, but we're open to advice. I'm not sure if that answers exactly what you wanted, Jane, but...
Any other discussion? Yep.
Yeah, I have a question about when they grade the roads and take rocks like that up in the road, what kind of plan we have to deal with that? Like last year, every time they built the Village Road, there's, you know, like twenty, twenty-five of those in the road, and, you know, they stop and throw them out, but it doesn't seem like that should be my job.
Well, we'll hope you keep up that good work.
And I only drive up the Village.
Thank you for being a good citizen, Dave.
Any thoughts or plans for that?
I guess hopefully we get more gravel on the roads.
That's, that is why we're trying to address this, because some of these roads, I mean, they're almost down to the ledges.
Yeah.
And that's part of the problem when they grade, there's nothing left for them to really grade. And it is a problem. I mean, we'll have to be addressed on it, and we may get out to the crew and say, hey, somebody may have to go behind, taking these boulders out of the road that pop up. But that's part of why, that's our next thing, of trying to put more money into our construction so we can put more gravel on these roads. And they need it, we know it. We just tried to address some of the worst problems first in the last five years, you know, getting culvers, getting the ditches so it wasn't raining off the roads. And now we have to put more material on them.
I'm glad to hear you have a plan, so that is interesting.
We tried, Dave. And if you do see them, feel free to take them off.
I'm gonna bring them to your house.
Any other discussion on the total general fund expenditures? Ready to move a question? All in favor of approving the 2019 total general fund expenditures of $1,427,107, of which $948,967 shall be raised by taxes and $478,140 by non-tax revenues? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Article six. Shall the voters approve 2019 expenditures of $144,561 for the Bent North Rock Memorial Library, $108,271 of which shall be raised by taxes, and $36,290 by non-tax revenues? Previous year total expenditures were $141,462 for the Bent North Rock Memorial Library, $95,687 of which was raised by taxes, and $45,775 by non-tax revenues. I would entertain a motion. Jessica made the motion. Is there a second? Sharon Tru, seconds. The floor is open for discussion. Chair recognizes Sharon Tru.
I just wanted to let everybody know how much I cherish our library. It is one of the most exciting places in town to go. The other night, I was there for a meeting. We got booted out of our little meeting space because there was a library book club, or book room, that was going to be. The community room was full of people making candy, and there was some woman with a lot of crap stuff that disappeared somewhere in a bunch of gifts. It was, it's just a wonderful place to go. I use interlibrary loan all the time. It's like magic. You make the request, you get the email, it's there. If I want a new book, I go to this library. I'm also a member of the Fletcher Library in Burlington, thanks to my husband. And I can wait two years for a new book there. Not here, it's there. And sometimes you have to wait a little bit, but it's there. It is just an incredible place to go, and I hope that the town will continue to support it as generously as it has.
Any other discussion? Toby?
Second, everything Sharon said.
Any other discussion?
I just had a question about this article, and my understanding was that the library budget was going to be incorporated into the town budget. And just, I'm curious about the process, how it got taken out again, and what happens if this budget is defeated, if this article is defeated, what, what's the recourse?
Okay, so two years ago, the town made a suggestion to have the library budget put in, put in front of the select board. And upon the select board's approval or disapproval, the library would either revamp their budget or have the option of coming back to town meeting as a separate line item. Two years ago, the budget was approved at ninety-five thousand with a six-thousand-dollar surplus, I think, correct? And the library and the select board were able to agree. This year, there was a disagreement between the select board and the library, and the library has the, the right to bring it forward to town meeting, and that's why it's a separate article today.
Will it go back?
That is, it is set up right now. That is, next year, I believe, the library has the right to bring their budget forward to the select board. Again, the select board will look over the budget. If, if the library disagrees with the select board's decision, they have every right to come back.
Sher, excuse me.
Yeah.
Laura Folwiler.
Do you have anything for that?
Julie, thank you for reminding us of the 2017 meeting. Alan Thomas isn't here, I don't think. But Alan asked a lot of questions at the 2017 meeting when we presented that in fact Vermont statute requires municipalities to support and fund municipal libraries. That was not a request, that's Vermont statute, libraries and towns. Alan kept on saying, well, what would happen if you brought the budget before the select board and they didn't agree? His questions were prescient, and I was naive, because I said, oh, well, we'll just work that out. And John Gordon, I believe, if I have his right, at that meeting, after our budget was accepted, he said, well, why don't we put that in, fold it into the town budget? Am I right? Oh, I'm just, I went back a minute. Okay. Well, it was a motion. It was a motion, it was made, and it was voted on by the town meeting and accepted. Last year, in 2018, when we brought our budget, library brought our budget to the select board, initially you rejected it, and we had to go back, and we shaved, and we shaved, and we shaved, and we shaved. And we brought it back, and you accepted it. So what we saw in real life was the very process that Alan anticipated. It worked to some extent, we shaved some things we really felt we shouldn't have had to shave, but we did. This year, the budget we brought to the select board, if you look at the 144 versus 141, it's a 2.1 increase. We can be very clear and specific about where that money comes from or where it went. The six-thousand-dollar surplus that we had and enjoyed two years ago, we didn't have anymore. So we were down in revenue. In addition, we had increased expenses. We felt it was really important, in addition to our books and resources and activities at our library, it was really important to keep our amazing staff. So we decided, after last year's no raises, we decided to give our librarian and our assistant librarian raises. And with that came the ancillary health benefits and all those other things that you all know from when you've got people in the road crew. Employees have all those other expenses. That's where our expenses went. If you can see it in the line items, you can see it. So we trimmed anything else, with the exception of $2,500 that we anted in, like other, yes, for the grant writer, grant writer. That money had not been spent in the last several years. And I think, I'm not sure if we did have a grant writer, but there was some money. So we didn't have to spend that the last several years. But because that grant writer serves the community, it was our perspective to ante into that as part of the community. So that's what happened. And I'm not sure I agree, with all due respect, Charlie, that it was our request to bring this to the town. It was the select board's prerogative, I'll grant you that. It was the select board's prerogative to say, we're not including this in our town budget. Because the motion that John Gordon made, that we thought was real and all voted on, was just a recommendation, as we were told. So it had no teeth. So the select board told us, you need to take this to the town. It was not our choice, but we feel very well supported by the town. I think it's fair to say, we don't necessarily have unanimous support from our select board, but we do feel that from the community and the people who visit our library. So I just wanted, I think there's a different perspective, Charlie, and I just wanted to share that. Do you have anything else to think here? Are you recording the numbers?
Jessica Godett?
Can I, can I answer? Can I speak first?
Sure.
So Laura, you know, I love you. You're amazing. And the last thing I wanted to do was go word for word for you, because I, I will concede automatically. But the select board and the town, we do support the library. We actually offered a flat budget of $100,000 to the library. The difference we're talking about here is just over $8,000. We took a look at, when we were doing our entire town budget, we looked at everything. We looked at the fire department's level budget every year. We look at the rec department. We look at every single penny that is contributed by the taxpayers. We do love the library. We do support the library, but it is our responsibility to make sure that we keep everything intact. When the library came to us, our overall town budget increased by 2.8%. The initial budget from the library was greater than that. We felt that a level budget of $100,000 was very fair and comparable to what they are going with. Yes, you made, you made cuts, you did everything. It's not an issue of that. It's not an issue of Sarah or the involvement. We love the library, but it's our responsibility to try to keep this in check. With that being said, we also looked at the 1.5 million dollars in an endowment. We felt that 100,000 of 108,000 budget, and the library could come up with the 8,000 out of the endowment was more than fair. We also did our research on towns, like the town of Georgia, who has a population of 4,900 and has a $122,000 budget for their library. It's not a matter of support, it's just our responsibility to try to keep it in check.
So my question, which was before, but how does the library want it to go? Do they want to come to the town every year, or do they want a different deal with the select board? I mean, I have no problem passing, I mean, I'm a pro vote for this, but I feel like every year it's risky, you know, for the library to come before the town. But if the select board is going to hold them to a standard where we can't have the library that I want, I guess I'm asking, how can this go better?
Well, for us, Jess, it, it came down to the difference of the $8,000, okay? We're looking at the endowment. I asked a question at a meeting, well, if you, if you don't plan on using any of your endowment money, what is the plan for the money? And at that moment, at that time, the, the answer was, we're going to have a meeting to figure that out. Okay? We, two years ago, before this was put forth to be a recommendation to the select board, the budget was $79,000. Two years later, we're at $108,000, okay? And again, I can't emphasize enough how much we support this. I compare it to the fire department budget, which is not fair. It's not apples to apples, I understand that. The fire department is volunteer, they do not have wages, they do not have benefits. But they just purchased a Ford F-550 for over $200,000. So there are expenses being paid in other areas. We're talking at town, we're talking at our budget meeting about looking at positions we may have to cut to keep our budget as fair and as affordable as possible for the taxpayers of Fairfield. We've taken into consideration so many things, and I'm new to this, and I take it very seriously. And I know I'm the voice, and it seems like I'm opposing the library. I want to be very clear, I'm not opposing the library, but we do have a responsibility to the taxpayers.
So what does the library have to say about what they, how they want it to go? I understand what the Select Board's responsibility is, but obviously, the library's responsibility is slightly different.
Peter Burn, library trustee.
Take the microphone, please, Peter.
Just to answer your question, it's easier, it's easier for the trustees to take the budget directly to the town. It's a neater process, we can have compensation with them. But if the trustees feel there's something important in the budget, we won't hesitate to come to the vote. So if there's a year where we can make a cut, we think it's irresponsible, we will. But some years, when we just don't think we can cut any more, we'll come here.
Peter, they couldn't hear you, so can you?
Sorry. In years where we think the budget is, can only be cut any more than we have, we'll bring the budget here. And we prefer just to take it to the town, because it's an easier process. But like, for example, this year, we felt that the money that we were asking for was essential.
Any other discussion? Melissa Manson?
Peter, or whoever, someone explain why you don't want to take that piece out of the endowment, please.
Chair recognizes Laura Folwiler. Sorry.
I'm glad you did bring this up, Charlie did. There's a tremendous amount of one misunderstanding and misinformation about the endowment that was given to establish a library by Consuelo North of Bailey. There's also some language in the Sergeant Will about establishing a library. But whenever there had, well, actually, particularly since 2017, when we did find that the town is responsible to fund the library, this gets drawn out, sort of like something out of the closet. Well, why don't we use the endowment? Well, first of all, we don't have that prerogative. It's not loose change sitting around in our pocket. As trustees of the library, and you can check on this, because we certainly have done our homework, about the legal responsibilities of fiduciaries, that is harmful in relationship to that endowment. And we can't just plug that money out for any particular reason. We did have a warning meeting in February where we began to discuss when or what are legitimate reasons that we can justify withdrawing from the endowment. Before 2017, we drew down on that endowment every year, things like $30,000, $40,000, because the communities' per capita assessment could not run the libraries. We were pulling money out of that endowment, and that endowment was shrinking, until we were told by the financial advisor, "We can keep going like this." And I remember 2017, we gave you the chart, that endowment will evaporate, and then what is a municipal asset will become a municipal liability, because you won't have any money. So your fiduciary responsibility is to keep that endowment growing, and there are statutory responsibilities. So that is why when someone says "selectmen" or someone else says, "Why don't you just pay for that from the endowment?", we can't just pull it out of our pocket and say, "Here." There has to be legitimate reasons for that, and that's where that conversation has begun, I can assure you. That conversation has begun. We take $32,000 out of our endowment every year to pay off on the mortgage, which was the commitment we made. We pay on that mortgage every year, and that takes money out of the endowment. What will justify the rest for other expenses? We are still in that conversation. So I just wanted to clarify, the boogeyman and the endowment, we need to put that to bed, because it gets hauled out every time. Thank you.
I took a look at the wording in the endowment as well when this came up. It says, "For the maintenance and the benefit of the library." I believe that the $8,000 that the Select Board was opposed to is to the benefit of the library.
Any other discussion? Anyone else? Ready to call the question? Is that a comment or calling the question? I know, I'm asking.
I just had a question.
Okay. John, Schreinerfer.
So when you compare the budget for Fairfield to Georgia's library, I would have, I don't know how in-depth you went into their budget, but I would have to think that library in Georgia is paid for by now. I know ours is not, but I would have to think Georgia is fixed. Just a question, if that's the case, that's a big difference in...
I think the state gave that library to the town of Georgia.
Well, there you go, and then it's paid for.
This is comparing operating budgets, not paying down debt budgets.
Yeah, just operating.
Just operating expenses. So that's a distinction, they don't have it. As far as work.
Ready to call the question? Okay. All in favor of approving 2018 expenditures of $144,561 for the Benton Norfolk Memorial Library, $108,271 of which shall be raised by taxes, and $36,290 by non-tax revenues? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Article 7. Shall the voters approve $92,225 for the support of the Fairfield Volunteer Fire Department, set appropriation only to be paid by the town upon condition that the Fairfield Volunteer Fire Department submit to the town by November 1st, 2019, a copy of its most recent balance sheet and bank statement for review by the town auditors. Previous year, $92,225. I would entertain a motion. John Schreinerfer, and a second? Second by Jane Archibald. Discussion on approving the $92,225 for the support of the Fairfield Volunteer Fire Department. Ready to call the question over here?
I was just wondering if somebody from the fire department wanted to tell us what they were doing.
Does anybody here from the fire department can speak to what they're doing? Damian, microphone coming.
So the only changes, and actually, if you look on page 90, the proposed budget for 2019, it actually, correct, it's not supposed to be the $92,225. So what we did is, we took the $2,000 from the utilities, because now we are now part of the, the utilities are paid by the town. So we took the $2,000, and that was supposed to be put up into repairs, so it's supposed to go from $10,000 to $12,000, and still we're going to keep the budget at $92,225. We're not really, it's been, I felt that this year, we've come together pretty well as a spirit, we've been going back and forth. One month we'll have the, the Fairfield Fire Station, and the following month we'll have it in the Fairfield Fire Station. We have the trucks on both ends of town, and there's, overall, there's really good turnout, pretty comfortable turnout for the, for fires or mental resist. Besides that, there's not any huge changes that we see forthcoming.
How many categories?
Right now, we have about 18 members. About maybe half of it usually comes to meetings.
Question, Alicia? Wait for the mic, thank you.
Hi, Dana. I'm curious to know if you feel that the Fairfield Fire Department is adequately equipped for renewable energies, like solar field fires, or even renewable energy on roof crops? And has our fire department had any introductory training on how to treat these fires and how to combat them?
Actually, last September, there was a few members that went to training at Camer America in Morseville, and so they brought back a lot of updated information as far as if there was a fire with, it's not just with solar on houses, but it's also with these newer creases and stuff like that, that you can't just go hacking away, otherwise you're going to get shot pretty good. So there has been update training, and I can almost see that there's going to be, as it continues along with renewable energy, there's going to be more and more training as it comes along, but...
Equipment-wise, there's any problem here?
Equipment-wise, there isn't really any different equipment. It's more just knowing where to shut off, shut off the main power to the grids, or not so much the grid, but the panels on the roof, which is normally right on the side of the house.
Any other questions or discussion? Julie, wilt it?
Just wondering, Bridget, if it would be appropriate to ask for a report to be in the town report, our department of, you know, calls and all the things that Dana mentioned that I don't think is printed for this year.
The budget is on page 90?
Yes.
Is there a report? Okay. So our request is to include a report of the activities of the volunteer fire department next year?
I know it wasn't there last year. I believe it was between 38 to 40 calls, and this year, that's about average.
Did everybody hear that? They're about 38 to 40 calls this year, which is about average. Okay? Any other questions, discussion? Ready to call the question? Oh, question, comment?
Name persons, name persons, we actually even put together a pretty good format where it showed as far as our volunteer work and the fact of each of these calls and the people that showed up and how many hours we had into a year. I can't remember the year, just the hours off the top of my head, but it's a good amount of volunteer work that's going in to these calls.
I think they're just like...
Oh, just kidding.
Yeah. Thank you. Joan Bernard? Wait for the mic, Joan, if you would.
Good morning, everybody. I think we're pretty lucky to have a fire department. I think it's a peace of mind, if anything happens, that we can go to our telephone and just call 911 and know that we'll be helped any minute. I think it's a wonderful feeling, like, here I am, I'm pushing 90, and I have the feeling that I don't have to worry, because I know I can get help if I need help. Even if I fall down, I know somebody will be there when I call 911, and I know it will be our fire department. I think we need to give them a well, well, praise.
Thank you, Joan. Any other comments or discussion? Ready to call the question? All right, all in favor of approving $92,225 for the support of the Fairfield Volunteer Fire Department, set appropriation only to be paid by the town upon condition that the Fairfield Volunteer Fire Department submit to the town by November 1st, 2019, a copy of its most recent balance sheet and bank statement for review by the town auditors? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Article 8. Shall the voters approve $15,000 in support of the Fairfield Community Center Association? Previous year was $15,000. I would entertain a motion. John Gordon, motion, is there a second? Dave Godet, second. Floor is open for discussion of the $15,000 approval in support of the Fairfield Community Center Association. Jane Williams?
I do volunteer work at the community center, and I have to say that, thank you, Sally right here, for all your hard work and getting things going and keeping things up at the community center. As she mentioned before, all the wonderful things that the community center does for our community. One of my concerns is that every year, we have to come to town meeting, and before town meeting, we have to get all these signatures and everything to even just get on the roster here. And so my question is, is it possible in the future for us to not have to request that with all the signatures every year, but just to request the amount from the board? It's just one of those things that I just think is extra, something that we need to do, and it's a pain in the neck. So I was just wondering if that was something, we ask for so little money compared to what we do for the community. I'm actually thinking that one of the things I'd like to ask for is a little bit more money, but how does that work?
So it is the Select Board's policy that additional money be requested by petition. However, they can, they can choose to add it to their warning separate. If you've come to them earlier, before town meeting, when they're getting their warning ready, then you can ask them to, and they can decide not to or put it in. Okay? Any other discussion or questions? Ready to call the question? All right, all in favor of approving $15,000 in support of the Fairfield Community Center Association, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Article 9. Shall the voters approve a donation of $3,971 for the Franklin County Home Health Agency? Previous year was $3,971. I would entertain a motion. Damian, Boomhauer made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dan McCoy. Floor is open for discussion of the approval of a donation of $3,971 to the Franklin County Home Health Agency. and seventy-one dollars to the Franklin County Home Health Agency. Any questions or comments? Ready to call the question? Okay. All in favor of approving a donation of three thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars for the Franklin County Home Health Agency, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Article ten, shall the voters approve a donation of three thousand dollars for the outdoor classroom? Previous year was two thousand five hundred dollars. I would entertain a motion. James Constantino made the motion.
Second.
Second by John Baxter. Discussion on the approval of a donation of three thousand dollars for the outdoor classroom? Discussion or questions? Ready to call the question? Microphone's coming. And your name, please.
Jamie Tidbits, the outdoor classroom coordinator, year two. I just wanted to speak to, you will see there is a slight increase in what we're requesting. In the two years that I've been here, I keep hearing about when we own the buses, when we own the buses. We don't own the buses anymore, so one of our bigger costs in the outdoor classroom, as is implied, it's outdoors, is transportation. So a lot of that small increase is intended to go towards more trips with the kids to get out in the community. And just to highlight for anyone who doesn't know what we do with the program, we have our annual project suite talk, which is now grades eighth through pre-K, do some sort of programming with maple sugaring, and are exposed to it each year. This year, we're doing trout in the classroom, which is a new program. We're actually raising some trout at least in May. Let's see, we have the high tunnel, the gardens, trying to think of, we do a lot of different cooking projects with the kids, taste tests. So that's kind of where that modest amount of money goes to support the program.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Ready to move the question? Okay, all in favor of approving a donation of three thousand dollars to the outdoor classroom, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Article eleven, shall the voters approve a donation of one thousand dollars for the Franklin County Animal Rescue? Previous year, one thousand dollars. Entertain a motion. Laura Fullwiler, motion, is there, is there a second? Second from Deb Hastings. Ready to call the question? All right, all in favor of approving a donation of one thousand dollars for the Franklin County Animal Rescue, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Article twelve is to transact any other non-binding business that may properly come before this meeting. John Schreinerfer?
Quick question for the, for the select board. The light at Chester Arthur? What was that? Well, just, I mean, I've been here, so I'm working for, got a false, false hook there now. So is there a plan of getting that up and running, or taking it down? If it's not gonna work, you might as well take it down.
We have been in contact with John, but Amanda, tell us more about that.
We're currently waiting for a car for it. It was set up wrong and signaling incorrectly, so we're waiting for that. It should be soon. Joan Bernard?
I don't understand what you're talking about. What is the light?
So there's a light at the end of Chester Arthur Road to signal up by your place when somebody's waiting at Chester Arthur Road, and then the opposite when you're coming, when somebody's, is supposed to signal.
North.
North Road. So they're supposed to signal each way, but they were doing the opposite. So they're trying to fix it. I believe it's not, is it not working at all right now?
Depends.
I think they may have just shut it down until they could get the car, so we're waiting on that.
And this is something we've been aware of since it's been put in, it hasn't worked well.
We're working with the state.
It's a good idea.
Work with the state, or you'd have to...
John Gordon?
I just gathered, talked about the work of the town, so I just would like to give a round of applause, just to add a round of applause or a thank you to our town board.
Any other non-binding business?
Thank you. I would just like to acknowledge, we have a group of visitors from a political science class at UDM that are here to view the town meeting, and what a great example that politics works respectfully, peacefully. It's, I'm proudly part of this, especially when our most intense debate is about our library, which ends up succeeding anyway. And I think the young people learn from things like a town being able to sit the hell with these expensive bids for a salt shed and do it themselves. I think that's a wonderful lesson for them, so thanks for being here.
Can I make a request?
One more. We're looking for animal control officers for the town. Any other town business?
Bridgette, I just wanted, when I was thanking the town group for really, really busting it to get that thing done, forgot to thank all the volunteers that helped to work on that salt shed, because there was a whole group to help get the walls on and the ceilings and a lot of town participation, so anybody that was able to volunteer for that and did, we really appreciate it. It was a grand help.
Any other non-binding town business? Jessica?
So I know our principal of Fairfield is here, Dr. Odell, and I was wondering if this was a good time to briefly talk about, I know there's a bond vote that we're voting on Australian ballot, and I know there's some things in there for Fairfield, and I don't actually know all of what they are, so I was wondering if...
Amanda, we can't, we have to move to suspend. He can.
I think in order to have Sean speak to the question, we have to suspend the rules.
Can I move that we suspend the rules?
Seconded in a voice vote to suspend the rules to allow Sean to speak. Who seconded?
Matt.
Matt, thank you. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, Sean?
Thanks Jess, thank you all for allowing me to speak. We do have a bond vote for BFA, which is a security construction project. Basically, what is going on in BFA is we've got the two buildings, and we've got sort of a problematic neighborhood right behind those buildings, and the children have to cross between the buildings seven times a day to get to their different classes. And when that happens, all of the doors to the building are wide open. Anyone can walk into the school building at any time without necessarily being noticed. And in today's day and age of school security being a real concern, that, as a parent of a student who goes there, I worry greatly about my son and having this wide open building. The BFA project is a very simple project. It is a set of walls that are gonna join the two buildings. It's got a roof, of course. The only thing they're really putting in there is a lobby and a conference room, so it's very, very bare bones. But what happens is when you connect a very old building to a newer building, you have to upgrade the older building. So there are no sprinklers currently in the original nineteen thirty-three building at BFA. They will not allow that to be connected to the former hospital without doing sprinklers in the older building. Additionally, there are transformers like you would find up on electrical poles that belong outside of buildings that are actually located inside the buildings at BFA, because that's the way it was constructed many years ago. Those need to be brought out of the building for safety and security. So there's a five point something million dollar bond that it's, that's what it's going to cost to get this very bare bones connector between the two buildings for the safety and security of all of our students and any of us who have children at BFA or are going to be going to BFA probably want to see this happen. That is a very expensive project, no doubt. So that's piece number one. Piece number two is what we would like to do here in Fairfield, and there are two projects. Project number one is a smaller project. It is to actually pave some of the dirt areas in our parking lot. One of the things that we notice is that the runoff from the building causes a lot of divots and rivers and other such problems in our parking lot, and then, of course, when it ices over, it becomes very dangerous. We prefer not to have a dangerous parking lot. The parking lot project also includes a sidewalk that goes around the east and south portions of the building to allow students who are walking down to the BML to actually have a sidewalk as they're coming around the corner instead of just walking in the middle of the road as they do now. Park Street, as we know, is a public road, and sometimes people take it to cut off the four corners, and they go a little bit more quickly than they should. So it's in the interest of keeping our students safe that we want to put that, that piece of sidewalk in. So that's project number one. Project number two is moving out of the common school. Right now, we're down in the common school building for our art, music, and band programs. And in the common school, we do have some drainage issues that may have or may not have been resolved, or we're not entirely sure, we'll find out very soon. We had to do a major mold renovation in there this last school year, and we actually had to replace the boiler as well. So first of all, thanks to the town for the contributions and helping with those, those problems that we had. But this is a building that the school district does not own, and it is not currently accessible to anyone who is physically handicapped. So as soon as we have a child who's in a wheelchair or who has any difficulties with mobility who comes to our school, they're not going to be able to access the common school. To retrofit the common school, it would be a multimillion dollar project because it would require an elevator inside the building. There are stairs outside and inside the building. It's just an older school building that was not intended for days use. One final issue with the common school is not about the common school at all, it's about getting there. We have to take about ten to fifteen minutes out of instruction in grades pre-K, K1, 2, to get the children dressed in the winter, which is about six months along, I notice here. So we have to dress them, then they get down to the common school, they have to undress, and then they have to get dressed up again, and then they have to come up and get undressed again. We're losing a lot of instructional time just getting children clothed properly to get to and from the common school. That could be resolved if we had our music classes up here. So what I did was, with the superintendent's blessing, I consulted with cross consulting engineers on both of these projects, the parking lot and the common school, and I asked them to tell us what are some possibilities. We were researching modular classrooms, which are basically trailers, classrooms on wheels. We were researching, putting them maybe down at the firehouse location, maybe adding them up here. In the end, the cost of that was so close to an actual stick-built addition that we thought that something that was going to be permanent would make more sense. So what we are currently planning, and this all, you know, assuming that the budget's passed, this will all be decided later on, but there would be an addition out the north end of the building to add a music room and a art room. That would actually create the ability to add an additional classroom into the building where our current intervention space is now. And those of you who have children in our second grade class, that's very full with twenty-five children, it's not full in other parts of the country, but in Vermont, that's very, very full, you will recognize that it would have been lovely to be able to split those classes into two, and that wasn't possible, we didn't have the space. That will be possible if we do this construction project. So I know that there's been a lot of conversation over the years about expanding the gym as well, and that was a great desire in this community. What I had to look at was what can I do without increasing taxes to the taxpayers in Fairfield? So when we started thinking about what that would take, we had the conversation about maybe adding to the bond project at BFA. But in reality, when the school districts merged, there was a lot of money placed into capital reserve, and we will be able to do our expansion projects here and our parking lot project with no additional funding whatsoever. We already possess the money, we can pay cash for it. So if the bond passes for BFA, then we'll be able to make use of that construction money, the capital reserve money, to take care of the addition here and the parking lot project. Of course, if the bond doesn't pass for BFA, then we have to think about, okay, we've got a security issue that we want to deal with at BFA, plus we have some issues up here we want to deal with. How do we split the funds to be able to do that? So really, it's a question of do we value both projects and do we want to see those go forward? And when it came to the gym, that was a desire and a want in the community, and the addition up here is more of a need. So I wanted to stick with the needs, and I also wanted to stick with what was fiscally responsible. Now, as a part of that, what I'd like to do is I'd like to add the bleachers underneath the windows, permanent bleachers that you can actually pull out. That will make us feel more like a real gym, and then also create a closet space down behind the science room over here where all these tables can be stored when it's not being used as a cafeteria. I think that's going to help this space a lot and make it feel like we have a real gym without having the added expense. And I know that in the past, every time we tried to do a construction project, it ends up getting more and more and more expensive as we keep adding to things that would be lovely. But really, my goal is to be fiscally responsible and spend only what we can spend in cash without having to take on any debt. So hopefully, that's helpful to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other non-binding discussion of town business? Jane?
I want to thank you for talking to us about this, because these were some questions that I also had. And one of the things is that since we are now part of the Maple Run School District, one of the issues is that at town meeting, we don't have the venue for discussing the school district, including our own school that we're in right now. So my suggestion is to have at town meeting some way that we can get this information. Like I wanted to wait to vote on it until I understood it a little bit more, even though I did try to read what it was in the town report. But I would like to still see it be part of town meeting, even if it has to be separated. Does that sound like a possibility? I mean, I don't know how many of the rest of you get all of the things that are, you know, projected for the, for voting on the school issues.
Sean, you want to speak to that? Or Amanda?
Thank you, Jane. I realize that that's a huge change, that that doesn't happen very often. One of the things that, that we do as a district now is we do bullet budget information a week, and it was held last week on Wednesday. It was warned, and, you know, I'm not...
meeting, and it was held last week on Wednesday. It was warned, and I'm not sure how to get that message out any more clearly. Like, I definitely tried to mention it in the community center, but we do have a budget informational meeting, and I know that several of our parents were there. Fairfield folks are the only ones who come to that, actually, which is pretty awesome, because Fairfield folks get their questions answered. So it's always, and I think it's always, the Wednesday right before town meeting in the evening. We did it at BFA, and there's a whole presentation. So we actually had the architects who designed the BFA connector there. We spoke...we didn't speak too much about the Fairfield project, because that's not actually a voting kind of right now, but we did talk about the budget and all those different things. But additionally, because I don't believe it's allowed to discuss it at town meeting, I am always going to be here at town meeting anytime you wish to suspend the rules and let me take over the room if I have some problem like that. I'm a good talker. And I'm also here at your disposal in the school anytime, and I'm happy to talk to anyone who would like to hear about it. I would be happy to come to the community center and speak. I'm not an official of the MRUSD Board, but I'm certainly someone who's very interested in making sure that you have all the information you need to make your phone.
Any other non-binding business relevant to the town?
I just wanted everyone to know that we actually have a rec department again. We are a five-member board. The rec committee was active but inactive for about 54 months, and we decided that it would be good to get a rec committee back in town. We hosted a holiday party around Christmas time that was put on, I think, 17 days' notice, and we had about 150 people show up. We had Christmas caroling. Thank you, Joan Schreinerfer, for your lovely singing voices. We had horse carriage. We lost our snow. We had much more planned than a trip around the school, but we still were able to...I think we had a good time. It was fun, and we look forward to it next year. Sean O'Dell mentioned leaving the Common School. We want to take that space over when you leave. Okay, just going to put that out there. The rec department really likes that building, and I think Amanda would love to get some historical society stuff out of the basement of the town clerk's office. I would like to put that over there. We also have an idea for October 5th, which happens to be Chester Arthur's birthday, and it happens to fall on a Saturday this year. We are starting to work with the community center for the first annual run for CHET, 5K. Please sign up now. We're going to have birthday cake and balloons. It's going to be amazing. We're just in the beginning stages of that now. Yeah, it's going to be awesome. In addition to that, we have a project coming up this summer to redo the ball fields down here as you see it. Not only because I'm a big advocate for the athletics, but it is the center of our town. It's not really that desirable to look at, so we have a plan of leveling the field out back. From the corner of the field near the fire station to home plate is a difference of seven feet, one inches, and water goes downhill, so it's very, very tough. We have a beautiful field that we do not take advantage of. So with the help of Norman Menard this year, we are going to level the field. We are going to redo our baseball field and our soccer field. We're going to put a fencing around it, so whoever's driving across it, that should stop after that. We're hoping to get some bleachers and just try to make a fun space, not only for the school to enjoy, but the town as well. Thank you.
All right. Anything else for today's discussion? Ready to call the question? Oh, actually, now I get to entertain a motion to adjourn. John Gordon, motion, second? Dave Godat, second? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by saying no? Ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.